Hi, are we ready? Now that you're still letting people in the room as we go?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, I think we'll get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending our town hall discussion today. My name is Stacy Duncan. I'm the Executive Director of the Agency and President and CEO of the Greater Binghamton Chamber of Commerce, an affiliation also known as the Leadership Alliance. I'm going to serve as the moderator for today's discussion, and I wanted to begin with a little background on some of the efforts of the Economic Recovery Cabinet and the larger Resiliency Task Force that we've created. And I will say one disclaimer, I think this might be the largest group I've had to moderate discussions, so 2020 is a year of first for all, but I think we've got a great group of panelists and great discussion ahead. So a little background on why we're here today. In April of this year, with the support of our Leadership Alliance Boards of Directors and our partners at Broom County Government, we announced the formation of the COVID-19 Response Recovery and Resiliency Task Force. The purpose of this effort was to address the immediate community needs or our response to COVID in real time and to identify strategies to maintain a healthy community and a healthy economy over the longer term. The task force itself is comprised of multiple parts: the Economic Recovery Cabinet, whom you'll hear from today, and three active work groups focused on following areas: tourism and quality of life, workforce and talent attraction, and business continuity. I'd like to take a brief moment to recognize and thank the members of my outstanding team for leading these groups: Judy Hess, Amy Shaw, and Brendan O'Brien, respectively. And I'd also like to thank Kyle Davis for jumping on our cabinet calls and keeping a lot of great momentum going with this group as well. Since April, we've been having weekly calls with the cabinet group. This group is comprised of representatives from federal, state, and local government, business and industry, education, both higher education and K-12, and nonprofit organizations. The purpose of these calls is to engage in frequent and meaningful dialogue and to keep open information share on the issues facing our community during this time. This group is not intended to agree on every topic, and we have not on many occasions, but it is through this candid discussion and information share that I think we've all gained perspective, and I think it's also helpful to help us overcome the challenges we face in the days, weeks, and days ahead. I'd like to say that we've come up with all the solutions, but if we had, we'd certainly share not only here but with the world. However, I hope that in attending our discussion today, this provides the community some sense of comfort in the commitment and the dedication that our groups have made to being on these calls frequently, regularly, and speaking very freely amongst each other. Today's discussion is centered around one vitally important theme: how can we, as a community, prioritize public health, sustain our businesses and economy, and support each other? We know there are a number of uncertainties ahead with national leadership, with the anticipation of a vaccine, with what, if any, continued stimulus will be provided to our business and our communities, but we're not going to talk about those things today. We're going to talk about the things that we can control, which is things like the positivity rate in our community, the support we can provide to local business and industry, and how we can collectively decide to work together to address the needs of fellow community members, including our disadvantaged and especially our kids. Before we begin our panel discussion today, I would like to thank the elected officials that have committed their time and staff to our frequent calls. This includes the Offices of Senator Charles Schumer and Congressman Anthony Brindisi, the Office of Senator Fred Exchard, the Office of Governor Cuomo and Empire State Development, Assemblywoman Donna Lepardo, Broom County Executive Jason Garner, Broom County Legislature Chairman Dan Reynolds, Broom County Legislature Cindy O'Brien, Mayor Rich David, and Town of Union Supervisor Rick Metteres. In addition, thank you to my board representation with this group, John Bernardo and Kevin Blake, and thank you to the following businesses or groups that are part of our weekly calls: Binghamton University, SUNY Broom Community College, Lord's, UHS, the Alliance for Manufacturing and Technology, Southern Tier Eight, Cornell Cooperative Extension, Broom County Planning, Broom Tyoga Workforce, National Development Council, Town of Union Economic Development, United Way of Broom, the Community Foundation, and Windsor Central School District on behalf of our K-12 community. The format for our discussion today is as follows: I will begin with some opening comments from our elected officials and then turn to a panel discussion on specific subject areas with members of our cabinet group. We hope to provide Q and A for attendees towards the end of our discussion, so I would encourage those that have questions to submit questions during, in the chat box if you're attending via Zoom. We're also airing this live via our Facebook page, but we do not anticipate being able to get to every question, but we'll certainly try, and those are questions directed at any of our cabinet members here today. So let's begin with some opening comments from our elected officials that have been able to join us today. We'll start with Assemblywoman Donna Lepardo. Donna, thank you for being here and for your leadership. As you know, much of the frustration we fear, senators from the lack of control we feel about the upcoming days and weeks and months ahead. So could you speak to how we can provide support to each other as a community to get through all of the challenges we face?
Well, first of all, thank you, Stacy, and to your whole team for what you've done. I think it's been really valuable and very important for all of us to have participated on the cabinet with you, to hear in real time status updates, what was going on in so many important sectors in the community. So that's certainly an extremely important part, is to stay in communication with one another. The worst thing we could do is to just work in our individual silos: government, healthcare, education, manufacturing, all of the important sectors that we rely on. So this has been a really good example, in my view, of people just willing to take the time to keep updated on what was going on with federal stimulus, our frustration, our worry that no new stimulus was coming forward, concerned about the gaps in services that were going on in the community. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's certainly one thing I've learned from our area in particular, is that, you know, we have a lot of common ground. We may differ occasionally in policies and how to move forward, but especially in this political climate, I think this community is really outstanding in the level of cooperation that we have among elected officials and the willingness that we have to learn and to listen to one another. So if we're going to come through this and build back better, I think the idea is to focus on the common ground that we have: the love of our community, the respect we have for one another, the willingness that we have to listen to differing opinions, regardless of political party, and to really become a group of, you know, what's been described sometimes as pragmatic problem solvers. We just want to focus on what we value in our community, and we value one another and what each one of us brings to the conversation. So I'm not sure if that's what you had in mind, but it's certainly the way I feel and the things that we've been through together, whether it was through the floods or through the economic downturns, at every place along the line, we've rallied, we've come together. I think the community can be, you know, can feel pretty proud of the group of people and how hard we're working to try to help this community thrive in the future. So, thanks.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Appreciate your thoughts. I would like to now turn to our Broom County Executive Jason Garner. Jason, thank you for being here and thank you for your leadership. Let me begin with a quick note that I've had the privilege to serve with the county executive as well as Mayor David on the regional, Southern Tier Regional Control Room calls, and I can tell you that they have truly been dedicated public servants that have brought the issues of the business and the community at large, large, to the state on these calls, and as well, I have to recognize the state and the regional control room effort that they're making to bring a regular information share with as much up-to-date information as they're receiving it. Because, you know, again, they're not always, they're not always on the same page, but it's important that those dialogues happen on a regular basis. So my thanks on that. Jason, as you know, we've heard through this control room process, county governments have been asked to serve as first responders during this pandemic: the first responders, their enforcers, but you also have to manage the balance of keeping businesses open and protecting the public health. And we know how quickly it takes, you know, how quickly we can move in the wrong direction with this virus. So based on where we are today, what would you want the community to do in the days and weeks ahead to make sure we're staying open and staying healthy? Can you unmute? Yeah. Oh, Donna, you're muted.
Can everybody hear me now?
All right, we got you.
You know, I'm really going to get used to the Zoom thing, maybe like the 2000 Zoom I do, I'll get it right. Well, thank you, everybody, for everything that you've done. I was just looking at the screens of people here and recognizing so many people that are great community leaders, and especially during the last eight months. And, you know, it's been a real trying eight months for Broom County, for New York State, this nation, but just in looking back, we, you know, what kind of, what makes me so glad I live in a community like this is the fact that we can work together to get things done and to move our community in the right direction. And, you know, we've seen this over the last eight months, probably more than we've ever seen it before, and our county has been in some real difficult spots. We've, you know, in our history, we've seen sometimes tough economic times where, you know, huge businesses that we never thought would leave moved out, and guess what? You know, we came back from that, and we've seen historic floods wipe out large parts of our community. We never thought we'd be able to build back from that, and guess what? We did that, too. And we've seen COVID hit, which is kind of a little different thing than we've ever seen before, so we're still kind of writing the playbook on it. But I think what I can say from my vantage point here is that this community is absolutely stuck together, and we supported each other through these last eight months in so many different ways. Whether, you know, where I can, where I'm working on things, just how all of our county departments, Health Department, Emergency Services, so many departments have come together and worked to fight this thing from day one. Just looking at our contact tracers, having 70 contact tracers where we had three before this thing started, and we've got people who are contacting that used to be, well, their trade is librarians, or they work at the arena, and they're like, you know what? We're gonna, we're leaving our job and we're gonna be a contact tracer and sometimes working 14 hours a day to do it. And just seeing things throughout the, you know, throughout the community, like when people stepped up and bought meals for hospital workers, and, you know, the United Way raised a fund to help the community, and it's been pretty amazing to see how we work together and even form new relationships that we never have really had before. One of the things that was important was opening K-12 schools, and we, at the county, we have a meeting with all of our superintendents and many school staff three times a week, and, you know, we just never, the county has never had that type of interaction with school districts like that before, and we've learned more about schools in the past few months than we've ever, ever known. And so, you know, look, I think as we move forward throughout most of this pandemic, we have, we have not really gotten into it like other parts of the state or other parts of the country have, and in the last month, we have. And, you know, it's been a, it's been a tough time, but I think that there's a way, and we're, and I think we're doing it, to protect the public health, but also make sure people have a living. I mean, that's important. I mean, people need to live, but they also need to earn a living, and by working together, I think we can do those things. And, you know, I, I look at what our unemployment rate, I go back to those dark days in April, where our unemployment rate in Binghamton metro area was 15.1%. I mean, that's like Great Depression level, and September, it's 5.7%. And so I think the collective work of our community to get us back to work and to, and to work to flatten the curve and keep our businesses open and protect as many lives as possible is working, and we're gonna have ups and downs. You know, we're gonna have really good periods where things are great, and we're gonna have some tough periods, too, but I think that's what Broom County is all about, that even in our toughest times, we can all work together and help each other and know that we'll get through those tough times, and there'll be good times to come ahead. So I'm optimistic, I'm optimistic just by looking at everybody in this Zoom and seeing all the people that are here, and optimistic that with our partners and with our community, our best times are ahead. So thank you very much for having this meeting, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, county executive. I'd like to move on to Mayor David. I know I see him in the list, but I don't see him on the screen. Mayor David, you're with us, correct?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, I'm glad you're feeling better and have recovered, and good to see you back at work, and thank you for being here and for your leadership. So my question to you, Mayor, is we've seen some of the most significant economic transformations in downtown Binghamton in the last decades. We've seen the emergence of a college town environment with more students living downtown than ever before, a push for new market rate housing for professionals, and the opening of dozens of unique and independent restaurants. So what do you see as the most important thing to keeping this momentum going during the days ahead when there's a lot of uncertainty, or especially the vibrancy of the density of a downtown environment?
Sure, thank you. Great question, Stacy, and thank you for kind of bringing us all together to talk about a really important topic. You know, our focus at the city has really been on our short-term recovery and our long-term recovery, because they're, both of those things need to be planned for and implemented simultaneously. But, you know, on the one hand, you're trying to figure out how to keep, you know, bailing out the water that's coming in, but you also have to, you know, make sure that you're, you know, chart your course, you know, for the future as well. And in my specific situation, as everybody knows, so I'm term limited, right? So I've got one year left and just over one year. So what I think is important is that, you know, whomever is in charge, you know, of City Hall, the next mayor, continues to advance, you know, the vision that we put in place and continues to move forward in the direction and embraces, you know, the momentum that we've seen. It sounds like a, you know, simple, easy concept or statement to make, but, you know, not everybody, you know, not everybody, you know, feels the same way. You know, our focus has been on, you know, cutting taxes or holding the line on taxes, major infrastructure projects like the parking garage that's gonna open in December. You mentioned, you know, the homeless housing or the affordable housing, or bringing a grocery store to a food desert for the first time in a generation, continuing to invest in our infrastructure, investing in public safety in our police department and fire departments, and not kicking the can down the road. And so that has, has been this Band-Aid approach for decades, and, you know, we've made the tough decisions, you know, in real time, and we're seeing the fruits of those labors, you know, as we speak. So I'd like to see someone who wants to continue, you know, making those investments focusing on creating the environment or atmosphere that is attractive for businesses to want to invest or locate or expand, or continues to bring people from across the region into downtown Binghamton or the neighborhoods, whether it's through, you know, additional types of housing for all levels of individuals, supporting these large-scale events that bring tens of thousands, you know, of people downtown. You know, we talk about things like Luma and other sorts of events that are really signature events for our community, but, you know, oftentimes, we don't remember, there was a time before all of these things existed. You know, I was working at City Hall 20 years ago. I remember when downtown Binghamton was a ghost town, and the mayor at that time had to literally beg people to take a look at downtown, or people, you know, wouldn't drive through downtown because they had public safety concerns, or they avoided gateways like, you know, Front Street because, you know, they didn't want to do damage to their cars because of the potholes on Front Street or Riverside Drive, et cetera. And, you know, a lot of these things have been taken care of or addressed, but we forget that it's very easy to, and as we've seen over the recent decades, that people that don't focus on the day-to-day operations of the city. So we talk about it right now like it was an easy thing to do, an easy way to get here, you know. I may be the one that's, you know, the voice or the face, you know, of City Hall, but we have a team of people in place. You're only as good as the people that you surround yourself with. So, you know, there's gonna be a new mayor, and a lot of the department heads are retiring just based on their ages, so you're gonna lose a lot of institutional knowledge, and you're gonna, you know, the last thing you want to have is, you know, someone who is, you know, for the first year or more, you know, trying to figure out where the lights are. So a continuation of leadership and vision is very important, and it's also important that the people on this call, you know, continue to support and embrace Binghamton. And, you know, that sometime has been a challenge over several years. You know, Binghamton is the urban center of Broom County, and it's the largest, you know, urban center in our Southern Tier region. There are lots of cities within the region. You know, most regions have, you know, like Buffalo would be an anchor of the Western, Rochester is the anchor of the Finger Lakes, Syracuse is the anchor of the Central. You know, Binghamton, it has been a challenge getting everybody on the same page, so the stakeholders need to continue to support, you know, Binghamton as well, because regardless of where you live, what happens in Binghamton impacts you regardless of where you are, whether you live in the city or not. So we're seeing all these things come to fruition. Sometimes I think we make it look easy when it's not. We have a lot of partners at the state and federal level who have contributed money or helped secure grants to make a lot of these projects a reality. So, and while we've been dealing with COVID, it was very important to me to make sure that these projects didn't stall, to make sure that, you know, we had these groundbreakings, that they continued to move forward. I understand why, you know, others, you know, defer or delay different types of investments or capital projects, but, you know, these projects, you know, are things that, you know, keep local people employed during a time where, you know, we're dealing with the COVID economy. They keep jobs and money flowing through the local economy, not to mention they are positive projects for the community. So there was a lot going on in Binghamton, you know, March, April, May, you know, through now, and that was intentional, and we had to, we were fortunate to be able to work with the state of New York for them to continue to support the projects that were funded, while also at the same time, we have to focus on our long-term future and making sure that with our future budgets, you know, there's so many other cities, you know, counties across the nation that have had to raise taxes or lay people off or drain their reserves or a combination of all three. You know, here in Binghamton, we held the line on taxes in the 2021 budget. We built up our reserves and created reserve accounts when times were good to help deal with catastrophe that has come now, and we were able to work with unions on concessions and do a whole host of other things to make sure that we maintained our investments, but also provided a fiscally responsible budget, you know, for the community. So I look forward to working with, you know, whomever that individual is next year, but I'm hopeful that the vision and the course doesn't change, because there's a lot of people on this call that have, I think, embraced the direction that Binghamton is going, and I think we want to continue, because there's always gonna be work that needs to be done.
I appreciate your thoughts. I'd like to now welcome our Town of Union Supervisor Rick Metteres. Rick, thank you for being here and for your leadership. My question to you is, what have you seen as the biggest need of the town residents? It's diverse. The town is also the Village of Johnson City, the Village of Endicott, and then certainly the suburban parts of the town as well. What have you seen as the biggest need during this time, and how can the community be of assistance?
Well, one of the things I think that we really should embrace is coordinating some of our efforts a little bit more for like code and policing. Obviously, the Town of Union doesn't have any police force, so we'll try to enforce some of these rules that have come out. We can't do that, and we have to depend on the sheriff and the New York State Police. But we've worked well with Mayor Deanie and with Mayor Jackson. We've tried to help each other out when we can. The, we in the town tried to keep as many people employed as we could, because we felt, our feeling was that the, if a person has a paycheck coming in, they're spending money in the economy. So we're continuing to try to do that. We're making our, we're going through our budget process right now, and our budget process is to try and do as many things as we can to still keep people employed and to, but to keep, to understand that the residents need lower, or need taxes at a reasonable rate. So I think adjusting the taxes and adjusting, getting, being able to coordinate efforts to get things to work together and helping each other out, that's the biggest thing we need right now, and getting, getting the community to be more positive. I know we, everybody wants to gripe about, well, I have to wear this mask, I have to do this, I have to do that. If it works, let's do it and get out of this situation. I haven't seen that it's not working. I just see, I've seen that we haven't done enough to, to get everybody involved, and so that's it. And it's not, it's not the political leader's fault, it's just people aren't really accepting it, and we have to get more of our citizens to accept, here's the situation, and this is how we get out of it.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate your thoughts. I'd like to move to Robin Alpham, representing Senator Exchard's office. Robin, thank you for being here, and please extend our thank you to Senator as well for his commitment to having participated in these calls and his leadership at state level. Can you provide an update on, from your vantage point, on some of the priorities in protecting public health and as well as recovery during this time from the office's vantage point? Can't see him. Yeah, I'm with us.
I saw him earlier, Stacy.
You're somewhere. There he is. Okay. Nat, can you unmute? One sec. Okay.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
On behalf of Senator Exchard, I just wanted to take a moment, provide an update on our office's efforts, as well as those of the Senate Minority Conference, to help the business community during the pandemic. Since day one, we've continued to help businesses, their employees, and families across our district understand and navigate the governor's executive orders in the ever-changing environment that we're all operating in. We continue to receive daily calls to help with unemployment assistance claims, now totaling well over 1,000 cases, and recently have been working to stop fraudulent claims that are adversely affecting our area businesses. We've continued our track record of listening to residents and the community by holding our telephone town hall meetings throughout the crisis, now, of course, virtually and through Zoom and also telephone. In fact, our team is preparing for another one tonight at 7 o'clock. Just to note, on the Senate Minority Conference, they've been conducting ongoing virtual listening sessions with various industries to learn the impacts that COVID has had, to help really figure out how we bridge the gaps and safely reopen the economy. The Farm Bureau, Chambers of Commerce, NFIB, Unshackle Upstate, and the Chemical Counselor, just some of those focus sessions that have already been held. The information gained here is going to be used to help The information gained here is going to be used to help the Senate prepare and prioritize bills to assist businesses across the state. We're also hearing that it's very likely that the Senate will reconvene between Election Day and New Year's to discuss fiscal options, depending on what the federal funds may look like going forward. Of course, in January, we'll be back in session to work on the upcoming state budget. I would just add that the efforts and discussions during our Economic Recovery Cabinet meetings have been invaluable to the Senator and our office as we prepare to return to Albany. And I'd just like to thank Stacy and the members here for assembling this group and everyone's commitment to work towards a viable recovery solution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, and those are great updates. And please let us know if you need any additional information on the issues confronting the business community here. We certainly have a great resource with Kyle to, to text in with our small businesses, especially on a regular basis. So anyways, we do love that. And we're going to end this segment with comments from Faith Babra on behalf of Congressman Anthony Brindisi's office. They thank you for being here and please extend our thanks to the congressman for his leadership. And also thank you for your office's continued support and advocacy on continued federal stimulus for businesses and for individuals and for leadership on changing some guidelines in the payroll protection program that were onerous to some businesses here in our community. So I'm wondering if you could just provide a few comments as to what your office is looking at moving forward as far as you collective community collaboration and its leadership?
Sure. Thanks, Stacy. You know, just really appreciative of everybody that was on the team and the elected officials. And, you know, the congressman used a lot of information from the meetings that we attended to move forward, some things. We are still, you know, in this mode of another vote could possibly happen before the end of the year with some PPP funding and some other local and state funding. So we're still looking forward to something happening, I guess, on our level. But as far as where we've been, I think that collaboration doesn't really describe the miracle that Broome County kind of pulled off. It has been an amazing, I think, group of people that we have, that you have brought together really and put them in one place to try to figure out all kinds of issues. We knew that COVID was an issue. We knew that there were things that we had to get to people. We knew the PPP was a problem. We knew that we had to get the idle loans out. We knew that we had to get some other funding to people for, especially for PPE and some other places. But what we didn't know was the issues that you're going to hear from people today about. We didn't know that broadband was as big of an issue as what we had talked about. We didn't know education would be really, you know, adversely affected. Childcare, agriculture, all these other issues. And the congressman in our office have been trying to work really, really hard to get some of these other issues that have come out of this, you know, and come up with some really great programs or answers and trying to collaborate with everybody has been, that in the future, you know, it's never really certain. So we, you know, look forward to continuing our relationship with everybody that's on this call. And, you know, proud to be from Broome County and the way that, you know, we have really come together and made things happen in light of, you know, some pretty tough times. So thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Faith. I appreciate your thoughts on this. So we're going to turn to some subject matter topics now. I have asked each of our cabinet members that will be speaking to speak on some pretty big topics for about three minutes. So I give you all a lot of credit for condensing what are very large topics in your respective fields. But, you know, I thought we would begin with what is, I think, most prevalent on people's mind, which is healthcare and public health. So I know we have Kathy Connerton, President CEO of Lord's Hospital, and I don't know if Rick Borshak, who's part of our group CFO at UHS, I don't know if Rick is on, but if he's, he's on, I'm going to direct this question at the two of you. As we've stated, the balance of keeping the community open and maintaining public health is not an easy one and our partners in healthcare have a unique perspective on this as you all have been face to face many ways with this virus. According to my information, demographically, we're seeing more cases of individuals below the age of 50, but we're seeing that the death rate continues to afflict our older residents. These are our parents, our grandparents. From your vantage point, what counsel can you provide the community on how to navigate the days and weeks ahead?
Stacy, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you for your leadership. You and your team have been extraordinary and I also want to thank all our elected officials. I can say on behalf of UHS and Lord's, we have just had great cooperation and support from all of you and we're very grateful. And to many of the businesses on this call, thank you for your lovely donations of food and masks to our staff. It was tremendous. You know, keeping our employees safe and healthy is mission critical to getting our recovery back in order for our businesses. And, you know, Lord's and UHS have worked very hard during this COVID pandemic to have a unified message and to speak with one voice so that we weren't communicating confusing messages out to the community. Probably unprecedented collaboration, frankly, in our respective histories. But I would say today, two important messages. We absolutely are seeing a younger population that is being impacted by COVID and we are still seeing a higher death rate with our older population. But two pieces to this puzzle. Number one, since March, we have seen people delaying their care, not going to primary care visits, not coming to the hospital when they're having chest pain and other things happening. And so we have both seen an uptick in patients who came to us sicker than they needed to be. Both hospitals have worked very hard at making sure that we have hardwired, well-oiled safety precautions in our facilities and our practices and our urgent care centers. We have gone very, and gone to great lengths to ensure that it's safe to come for your care. What's not safe is to be home with acute conditions and not seeking care. We both have virtual platforms that people can call from home. So we would encourage you to send a message to your employees and associates that if they are having acute issues, not to delay in care because it is causing negative impacts to their health and wellbeing and ultimately impacting our businesses because we can't keep them open. Second, we need to take these rising numbers seriously. We are seeing that more and more people are asymptomatic, meaning they're not showing symptoms of having COVID, but have it. And, and that's the worst, right? Because if I have, if I have a temperature or I'm coughing, I at least have an indication that I have it. But we have seen where people are asymptomatic with no symptoms at all and yet are carrying the virus and can spread the virus. So the message for all businesses is, many of you work with our respective occupational health departments. Please continue that work and please continue the safety precautions that have been laid out, wearing masks and PPE, hand washing frequently and social distancing. We can't let go of that. And where we are seeing in many businesses, the spread is higher than other places is in lunchrooms and places where people are taking their masks off, but there's too many people packed in a lunchroom together. We've got to really stay vigilant to that. There are more and more studies coming out that are showing that wearing a mask makes a big difference. And we can stop the spread of this virus and get our incident rate back down and our positive rate back down if we, if we abide by these rules. I saw Adam Flint's message on the chat box and agree with him completely that we can have all the policies and rules that we want and we can have enforcement. But at the end of the day, it's about individual accountability and it's about each one of us when we see someone not following the rules to speak out and ask them to for our own safety and for the safety of our employees. We, you know, we have taken some measures most recently because of the increase. We have, we're not allowing visitors again on our respective campuses. That's not an easy decision to make because it's hard on our patient population. But we certainly want to make sure that we're keeping our staff safe and our patients safe so that we can take good care of them. So our ask to all of you from both of us, from UHS and Lord's, is to take these numbers seriously and make sure that you're doing all that you can to have your employees and associates adhere to those, to those precautions. They do make a difference and they're important to us for our continued recovery of this community. Thank you, Stacy.
Kathy, thank you. We appreciate that, especially from that vantage point. I think that's great information to carry with us. I'd like to now, I'd like to turn it over for a few minutes to Lori Welch, Executive Director of the United Way. The work they've been doing is tremendous to support individuals in this community. So, so I've given her two real easy topics to talk about. Lori, if you could talk about what you're seeing with food scarcity, certainly an important topic, especially as we head into the colder weather months as well as mental health issues that you're seeing an increase on your 211 network. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you for facilitating these meetings. They have been so invaluable to us and, and I can't tell you how much they're appreciated. We have a unique perspective here at United Way through our 211 Susquehanna River Region, which actually is composed of a group of four very talented and experienced information and referral specialists who field calls from Broome, Tioga, Delaware, Shenango and Abseco Counties. In a typical, I was looking at some numbers and in a typical year, when I look at September 1st through October 15th of 2019, it was about 3,600 calls, which is about normal. And the average call was 3.1 minutes. When I look at that same time period for this year, it was 9,520 calls. And the average call was more about six minutes. So that gives you a good idea of what those amazing, amazing specialists have been facing. We have deployed some of our other staff members to assist with the, some of those calls that helps. But when we look at food insecurity, what we're hearing from the community is we are seeing in the last several weeks an uptick in Chow referrals, questions on mobile food pantries and how to register for those. We also have received a lot more requests for referrals to other local food pantries. We've scheduled about 2,300 Thanksgiving basket registrations for Catholic charities. We've been getting some calls regarding concerns that the Thanksgiving dinner usually hosted at Binghamton High School has been canceled. And a lot of questions on the Bandera Christmas Initiative, Dinner Initiative, which still is kind of, there's uncertainty as to what, if anything, that will look like. The other area within food needs that we are seeing an uptick again is need for food delivery. Sometimes we have callers who are able to purchase groceries, but they can't get to the store for one reason or another. Sometimes it's a matter of them being quarantined or sometimes it's a matter of an elderly person or someone who just isn't, doesn't have that mobility to get to the grocery store and maybe their connection to grocery delivery is quarantined. So there's another uptick in need for volunteer services for that. In the area of mental health, I want to make sure that I clarify that, keep in mind, 211 Susquehanna River Region is a resource and information center and we connect needs in the community through those callers with resources in the community that we have available to us through our database. So the, the specialists are very skilled at not only identifying the immediate need presented by the caller, but they dig deep to identify, maybe the caller is calling because they need a Chow referral, but when in reality, there may be additional services that they need to be connected to and they coordinate those services during the call. When we look at sources of anxiety or upticks and stress, we kind of break them into two categories right now. Immediate COVID-related and then other general needs, which quite often are also COVID-related. But for specifics on COVID-related, we have certainly seen an increase in the last six or eight weeks on need for clarification on the parameters of quarantine. Someone who believes they may have been exposed, they're not sure what to do. They're not sure who to call. Broome County Health Department has been amazingly supportive in giving us those resources that we need to connect the people to the right areas. A lot of times, people have questions on clarification on testing. Should they have a rapid test? Should they go through the traditional test? All of these things are great sources of anxiety for people. Assistance in understanding the travel restrictions and overall telephone reassurance. Many of these people have been isolated for long periods of time and there's no end date for them. Whether it be they, you know, their connection to the outside world as someone who used to come in and now they can't due to their health vulnerabilities or the person who was providing them that support or maybe they are quarantined. They just need somebody to talk to and somebody to assure them that they are not alone. So quite often, we have people call us once a week just to touch bases and we are actually reaching out to people to make sure that they have the supports that they need. And if they don't, we try to connect them with those supports. We receive calls from parents juggling school and work and how to maneuver that. And we try to connect them with the supports that can help them navigate those systems. Certainly, people facing financial challenges continues to be a big source of anxiety and challenge. Those looking for rental assistance, still navigating the unemployment process. People now becoming concerned about potential evictions when, when that, you know, that timeframe comes. And we're now starting to get calls from people looking for, anticipating the need for tax preparation. And I will share with you that we have, I think we've developed a way to still provide our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, the SHIR VIDA, through the IRS and we're going to do it virtually, but also safely in person. More to come as time goes on. But we are very committed to providing that service because it's in great need. As the cold weather approaches, we are seeing more and more people looking for having anxiety over being able, being able to provide their families with the warm weather clothing that they need. In past, they've been able to get those resources through the schools and the schools are still there and available for them, but they just, some of them don't know how to stay connected to that. So those are other resources we're connecting them with. Substance use disorders, we are still receiving calls on those and it, that kind of goes in ebbs and flows. We see increases and decreases and, you know, we're making sure that people are connected to the resources there. And certainly domestic violence calls, again, it's not consistently higher, but we're seeing ebbs and flows in that as well. So those are some of the areas that we are, we are seeing. But I would say, when we look at the calls, 60 to 70% have a basis of COVID-related in one form or fashion. So.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. And then there's, if there's any information and ways that the business community or individuals can donate, make donations, especially with, I know it's this time of year, there's a lot of drives for coats and other outdoor gear that's of need. I know it's challenging because you can't really go into a lot of places, but if there's any information, we would love to distribute that to the community. I'm going to now welcome Diane Brown, Executive Director of the Community Center, Community Foundation of South Central New York. Diane and Lori also have been tremendous partners and they are working collaboratively on the issue, the very challenging issue of childcare, which remained, which was and remains a critical community need. So Diane, I'm going to turn the floor over to you and Natalie, I think you had, do you have a document you wanted to have up on the screen?
Yeah. So thank you, Stacy, very much. This, this economy, the recovery cabinet has been invaluable to us in terms of making our grant decisions as well. So I want to thank you for, for letting us be a part of it. So what you're looking at on the screen is a mind map done by our Binghamton University MPA intern who is working with Lori Welch, Amanda McIntyre from the Clee Foundation and our foundation on doing a review of best practices in terms of childcare and also getting a handle on what are the issues. So she did this so she could sort of understand herself how complicated the, the issue is. You can see from looking at this, whether you look at the revenue structure, the compensation for staff, access to care, quality of care. These are the big issues in terms of childcare, but all of this is related. Minimum wage, reliance on grant funding, safety, OCFS, which is the Office of Children and Family Services. What's the real cost of care and how does that impact staff compensation and what the rates are that organizations can charge as well as families that sometimes have to pay up to a third of their income for childcare? So I just wanted you to have a chance to look at this and see that this is not a simple problem. It was a simple, it was not a simple problem before COVID and COVID just exacerbated it. So we are looking to, by the end of the year, we will have a report from Sophia, our student, that will have looked at not only what are the issues our student, that will have looked at not only what are the issues, but some policy, she'll have some policy recommendations, and she will also be looking and reporting on positive models around the country and around the world. So that's the first thing I want to mention. The second thing I would mention is that the system itself needs an overhaul. It's needed an overhaul from the beginning. It still needs an overhaul. COVID has just made it worse. If we took a look at numbers right now in terms of unmet needs in the region that, we serve five counties, but I'm going to tell you the numbers from Shenango, Tioga, and Broome. There are 7,900 unmet childcare needs. In other words, 7,900 children who need care who are not able to get them. Most of those are in Broome, 4,480 are in Broome County. So we've got families out there who don't have access to care or they don't have the funding for care. There's a national prediction that over 40% of childcare centers may close by the end of the year because of COVID and what COVID has caused, as I said, to make a bad situation even worse. So, you know, what can we do, what can be done about this? It's not going to be enough for private funders to fund it. It's not going to be enough for government to fund it. You've really got to come together and try to solve this as a collective. Business leaders can, need to be part of this as well. The funders group that I'm part of has been looking at this issue seven, eight years. We started looking at it seven, eight years ago. The problems are still the same. What I am encouraged by is seeing that business has come into the picture and is offering thoughts on what they can do. So what can they do? Both Lourdes and UHS have childcare available to their employees. That's fantastic, but there needs to be more than that. There needs to be flexible working options for parents, particularly those who are now homeschooling children or children that cannot go to school, flex time, staggered shifts, job sharing, remote work, and less business travel. This is just the beginning. This is just like the tip of the iceberg for what we're dealing with right now. So it's a, it's a, it's a big issue. We're working hard to at least get a handle on it, and we will have a report that'll be available by the end of the year on our website and to anyone who's interested in it. So thanks, Stacy.
Thank you, Diane. Moving on to the topic of workforce development, I'd like to invite Bob Murphy to, or Bob, I have a question for you. Pre-COVID, we know that one of our most immediate workforce challenges was the lack of qualified workers for both skilled and unskilled positions. What we're seeing now is also the need to fill hundreds of jobs in order to consider essential occupations, such as frontline service workers, distribution, and production floor workers, and especially in healthcare. What does the job seeker landscape look like currently, and how can we better help you do what you need to do?
Okay. Thanks for the question. It's a great question. I think right now, just going through, just real quickly, go through the labor report that came down this past week, and it just kind of highlights what's going on here. I think Jason mentioned that the unemployment rate went down from 9.3% to 5.7%. The one thing that, you know, and that's, and actually, so we're about, we're in sixth place of the, you know, the, I think there are 15 regions in New York State, so we are really kind of doing well respectively that way. But the one question that came up in this conversation I had with the DOL officials is that we are, the leisure and hospitality has been hit particularly hard. I think that it's not, all of those feet have fallen yet on that, and that kind of is going to lead us to, the next item is that there's going to be a lot of folks who have previous been in the, you know, leisure and hospitality, and those jobs may be going away, or, you know, at this point. I did anecdotally speak with several, both in Binghamton and Johnson City restaurants, and they were both saying that they are really taking a hit, especially going into winter time, that they're making about, with 50% ceding, they're making about 40% of what they made, and they're not going to be able to cover their, you know, their expenses, and just hoping to make it back to the next warm season. So that'll be a challenge there. I think retraining and finding a way to start creating a pipeline for perhaps retraining those folks who are in the hospitality business, and then to getting into the businesses that seem to be, they're, you know, we're getting great demand from, which is from the manufacturing, the healthcare at this point, distribution, and then again, the frontline services as well. And what can we do to make sure that we have a range of jobs at different skill points that, so that everyone is going to benefit from our efforts and not just, you know, a particular, we tend to focus on a problem. What we need to do is a broadband, you know, view of that problem, which also ties us back into broadband, which is, you know, there's a lot of stuff in the rural areas that as far as getting folks there and access to that, to that as well, and it's been an issue. And part of that issue has been getting the federal rules to relax, be able to relax so that we can, like, the workforce could buy tablets, which we have not been allowed to on their photo, to be able to do that. So that's, might be helpful on along that way. I think what we may want to do in this process is to work towards, you know, taking at one point advantage of this to say, I think what Diane said is that we need to fix the whole thing. And this is what, you know, whether it's the daycare, and daycare leads into the workforce issue, and then, because there are, even though the unemployment rate's at 5.7%, there seems to be a lot fewer people working, if you look at the hard numbers. And then that is the, what their surmise is right now, and there's no hard data, is that's people who have probably chosen to stay home at this point, you know, with their kids that, you know, with kids, school's not, you know, providing that ability for them. So it's going to be an interesting thing, and as we come out of, you know, the post-election season, we're going to also need, the government jobs are really going to be a challenge as well. I think a lot of the local governments, I think Rick Mattarice mentioned that, I think Mayor David as well, they've continued to, you know, keep up on unemployment. I know the county especially has been, you know, trying to keep people in their jobs, but if there isn't some kind of clarity from the federal government, you know, coming into January, I know, it might be a little bit after that, but there's going to be, you know, some hard reckonings to be had. But right now, the government jobs are maintaining, you know, you know, a little bit, they're less than there had been in September of 2019, but they're still continuing to move on, so. But I think what I think what we need to do is start looking at career pipelines, and then I'll, and that's, you know, you know, looking at new partnerships, you know, recreating old relationships and starting new ones. There'll be a meeting tomorrow that, with the, both the agency and the chamber put together as far as the workforce task, workforce task group, and there'll be a discussion on that with NIAHTAP, which I'm a member of, and the New Way Forward, that will, I won't burden you with that information, but you might want to participate in that. But I would say, for anyone who's looking for it, you know, I would like to see an outreach to both, like, New York State DOL, you know, SUNY Broome, BOCES, the agency, Tioga County IDA, you know, the both businesses, both chamber members, non-chamber members, the restaurants and hospitality, Cornell Cooperative Extension, both Broome and Tioga, AMNT, Southern Tier Eight, they're all, you know, things who have been looking to create a pipeline for apprenticeships and moving forward and just trying to do that. I would also point out, anyone listening looking for a job regionally and they'll give you, you know, really good rundown of curated job openings along the way. And if that doesn't work, we're open here at the Broome-Tioga Workforce at the Oakdale Mall, and our number is 778-2136. Please tell anyone who's looking for employment, we're open, and we're open to walk-ins as well, you know, in a limited basis. So please come in, make an appointment, even better, and we'll see how that works. Thank you.
Somebody's asking, can you put that phone number in our chat?
Okay. Yeah, will do.
So Bob mentioned, it's a good segue. I want, COVID has certainly peeled back the layers on a number of areas in which our community has demonstrated some vulnerability. And what I don't think, I think we all knew, but I think Jen knew, access to broadband has risen, certainly invisibility is a barrier to our response and recovery. So I'd like to ask Jen Gregory to speak for a minute. And my question to you, Jen, is one of the most visible challenges that COVID has uncovered is the lack of a comprehensive broadband infrastructure. Access to broadband is critical to our connection for education, for healthcare, for work, but it's also vitally important for access to services that the community may need. So can you speak a little bit on this topic and also talk a little bit on the initiative that you're leading via Southern Tier Eight?
Sure. Thank you, Stacy. Yes, I'm from Southern Tier Eight Regional Board. Broome is in the heart of the eight counties that we work with for federal investments. Hence my interest of why we've been following the challenges of broadband infrastructure over the last 15 years. And every once in a while, we make a little bit of progress. Unfortunately, some of the challenges that we have been facing over the last several years, yes, came to light this year. You know, we're relying, the internet is the one tool that has helped most of us get through this quarantining and reducing our physical contact time. And I use the phrase, for most of us, because our community challenges that our neighborhoods in Broome County and across the eight counties, they still lack reliable internet access. An interesting report that came out this summer, thanks to Congressman Bryn DC, on broadband access. If you get a chance, they succinctly describe the challenge here, and just 46% of Broome County residents have access to this. So how fortunate are we to be able to be on this call right now? That most of them don't. And the other important part with that, that, okay, we have half the population that has access, we have the slowest speeds in the state. You can see a map, very well documented in that report that showcases that for the region. So recognizing this issue, your regional board, we reached out to the school districts and municipalities across five of our counties to identify the underserved areas, because the school districts, they've been so busy identifying, trying to keep everyone sourced with hotspots so that our children can have access in their classroom. We also brought together a team of development professionals and our grant writers to, one, identify the areas that lack the access, two, work with each other, our neighboring counties, because maybe sometimes the end of the road doesn't stop at the county line, but continues, and to develop strategies for improvement with changes in technology. And then, as they arise, seek the federal investment opportunities to expand this broadband infrastructure so that we can improve this internet access issue for all. I want to share too, this will be a long-term effort, but we are preparing now for pandemic rebuilding opportunities with the hope that there will be some investment there from our federal partners. I will share that this is a wide regional effort, and I would like to thank our county representatives that are on this call, including Stacy Duncan, the Director and President of the Chamber, and IDA, our Broome County Planning Director, Beth Lucas, and our Emergency Service Coordinator, Mike Poncello. So they are your local representatives on that team, and I, while we've just gotten started in the last few months, I look forward to finding some solutions for our communities over the next few years. Thank you, Stacy.
So much, Jen. And thank you for leading this effort and for continuing to beat the drum on this topic, as we've seen now, vitally important. So we have a few other topic areas I want to talk about. We have a couple, we're going to end at education, but I've got a couple speakers that I think are very important topics. I'm targeting about 5:15 for some Q and A, so we'll, we'll see how we do. One thing, and I'm going to ask Carol Miller to speak for a few minutes. Carol's the Executive Director of the Alliance for Manufacturing and Technology. And one thing that I've seen, and I'm sure others, is that COVID has been very binary in its financial impacts to some industry sectors. While others have been immediately devastated, as we've seen with tourism and hospitality, others have actually sustained and even increased output, like manufacturing in some cases. So my question to you is, how would you rate the health of our manufacturing sector here locally, regionally, and what do you, what's, you know, what are you seeing as some concerns ahead or some opportunities ahead?
You very much, Stacy, and thank you for the work that you've done on the committee because it has been extremely helpful to the community at large. AMNT works with small to mid-sized manufacturers in the region, and we have seen a wide variety of experiences in manufacturing. As a whole, manufacturing has fared fairly well during COVID because it has been deemed essential. Many of the manufacturers have been deemed essential from day one, prior to even phase one opening. As part of the pandemic, it's really highlighted manufacturing is a critical sector for our nation and for our security and for our communities at large. The challenges have been, you know, throughout this whole period, manufacturers have been first and foremost concerned about keeping their employees safe. You know, it's important that they had established the guidelines and continue to follow the guidelines and have access to PPE, which has been critical. We have a couple programs that are of interest to manufacturers that are being rolled out as part of the CARES Act, and that is to PPE, to make sure that companies have what they need, how much they need, when they need it. Because, you know, we are continuing to move forward, and as we go into the winter season, we're anticipating that the needs are going to be greater. Plus, we don't want to compete with healthcare. So we are looking at a statewide program to address the needs and also companies that are manufacturing PPE programs that can help them do that and get tooled up appropriately. We're also helping companies, one of the ways that manufacturers were impacted was through their supply chain. And some companies specifically, dependent upon industry, have been impacted in different ways, but we're helping. That is also a statewide initiative in identifying where and what the priorities are in creating domestic supply chains. So if companies are interested in doing that, they should seek us out because there is a program available for that. And then one of the last areas is in virtual assessments. We are doing a no-cost virtual assessments with manufacturers in New York State to identify how to help them manage through COVID and how to sustain and improve during this time period. Because as you said, many of them have changed in demand. Some's gone up. In fact, some companies are doing really well. Some companies in food and different essential type products are doing well as organizations go. But everyone has had to change the way their sales process work because we can no longer do face-to-face interactions. So we're working with companies to help improve their businesses in that ways, and that's a priority. Attracting talent, you know, that's come up a couple times today. Pre-COVID and during COVID, workforce is an issue. Manufacturers, that's the number one thing we hear with manufacturers is they're looking for people for, you know, unskilled, semi-skilled, skilled, professional staff across the board. And it's constraining our ability to grow, to sustain and to grow during COVID and beyond, as well as innovation, to bring some of these manufacturing products and reshore them. We need to be more innovative, and companies and manufacturers are looking at different technologies to be able to do that because we have to be competitive and to be able to bring business back to the states. That's a requirement. There are a number of things that are available. I don't know if we've been great in getting the message out. AMNT is whether, and New York MEP at large. But please reach out to AMNT and to myself if there's anything we can do. There are programs available to offset the cost of consulting services. There aren't as many capital equipment-type grants and programs available, but there are a handful of them. So if there's something that manufacturers need to be able to sustain, improve, or to address COVID in their organizations or in their markets, we'd love to talk to people and share what's available.
Thank you, Carol. Now, in our very important agricultural community, I'd like to invite Brian Akima with Cornell Cooperative Extension. Brian, you're with us right now.
Hey, Stacy.
Yes, I knew. I saw you earlier. Brad, thank you for being here. So of course, the health of our farms and our food producers are vitally important to our community. So a similar question, how would you rate the health currently of our farms? And how can the community support local and regional producers? And then is, are there ways that our ag community is addressing or participating in the food scarcity issue?
Absolutely. So thanks, Stacy, for having me.
Absolutely. So thanks, Stacy, for having me. But, you know, one of the things that we really, I would say, over the last eight months, and agriculture's done a really great job with this, is adapting. We've had to continually adapt this year and as always. But, you know, agriculture here in Broom County is a $32 million, you know, economy right here, just here in Broom County. But some of the things, the challenges that we've had and we've seen, you know, we've dealt with. The horticulture industry right in the beginning that was considered non-essential. You know, ended up, we worked very diligently, working with Donald Lepardo, the state, on getting that essential. And they ended up having record years for them. People are interested in growing their own food and dealing with that. So they were actually having record food production. They were actually having people purchasing products from them. They were out there. So several of them actually closed a month ahead of time. So, you know, that was a positive that came out of this. When we're looking at other things, looking at our dairy industries continually to struggle. We have thirty dairy farms right here in Broom County that makes up about $20 million of that local economy here. And one challenge that we're seeing with them and, you know, think about is with the restaurants. How does that affect the dairy industry? But about fifty to sixty percent of our cheese is purchased through the restaurants. And about fifty percent of our butter is consumed in restaurants. So a lot of that is a huge impact on our industry, going right back in and affecting our farms locally, here locally, regionally, and then statewide. On that, you know, when you're also thinking about that is schools, how's the school effect? A lot of our food is consumed in the food, you know, in the schools, the dairy industries, a lot of that is in the schools. And they're not necessarily getting that milk that they may have got. So they may be getting the $420 check from the state, but are they actually spending that on products that are actually good for them or that they're consuming? So we're seeing a lot of that impact that we don't really think about, seeing that on our industries here locally. Processing, so we've had, you know, one thing that we really are seeing is the need for local meat. The local produce, people are consuming a lot of local products, whether it's vegetables, right down to their meat. One thing that we've talked about all the way through is, how do we, how do we sustain that? We're struggling with the processing facilities and being able to have our processing. So if somebody's raising goats or sheep or beef, they're actually out a year to two years before they're actually going to be able to be processed. So they're not able to get new processing to spots for that. So we're struggling that here locally. We're seeing that across the state, not just here in Broom County. But it is definitely a challenge is, we've got the demands out there from the consumer, we just can't meet them. We don't have the facilities here to meet that. So we've been working closely with the state officials, ag and markets on this. This challenge that we're seeing in here. Come on that. Safety plans, farms have all had to have safety plans that they typically, they never close. One thing, you know, the farms were open, you know, people were still eating, people, they were still producing food. So working with farms on safety plans, workforce has been a big issue. You know, especially seasonal workforce has been an issue. We haven't been able to get the immigrant workers in to do some of the vegetables or the fruit picking. So you're saying that, we don't see that right here in Broom County, but you look out in the region, the Finger Lakes, that's definitely been a challenge that some of the farms are. So a lot of the products are sitting right on the trees or in the ground that we haven't been able to harvest. So going forward, you know, that's going to be a continual issue. It's been an issue for years and the COVID just really brought that out. You know, that issue out there. Some opportunities that we're really seeing and ways to support, USDA is doing this, the Coronavirus Assistance Program Two, which the sign-ups are open right now for people that are doing in the farming community. Get out there and support your local farmers' markets, the Taste New York Farm stands. That's what really, you know, they're all, they're not just selling their own product, but they're also selling their neighbor's product or the people in the region's product. So the more we can do to support that is really into our economy. You know, every dollar we spend here locally comes back about six times in the agriculture. So, you know, the return on your investments is pretty strong here in agriculture, so. To the agriculture.
I'm going to end our panel discussion. So I'm going to start with higher ed. Dr. Drum, Kevin Drum has put us. From the President of SUNY Broom, excuse me, Community College. So from the perspective of higher education, we know the challenges that you have with in-person instructions. My question's a little nuanced. Can you speak to, I think, an important message, I guess I'd ask you to send is, why is it vitally important for students to still feel confident right now about their college education? How important it is to continue and not get discouraged? And then that they can still receive the quality education during these challenging times?
Thank you, Stacy, and good afternoon, everybody. The main answer to that question is, we need you. We need them. The workforce shortage, you know, that we were all facing nationally and locally, you know, before COVID. I'm afraid as we come out of COVID is likely to be worse. Because a lot of people, a lot of young folks chose not to go to college this year to take some time off. The number of people who applied for federal financial aid, for instance, was way down, you know, this year. And in particular, from families, you know, that are most economically challenged, the children are from those families. So that creates a whole other host of issues. So we need the next generation of workers and leaders for our community. And right now, many of them are not in the education pipeline. Higher education was well poised for this distance learning phase that we're all in, this remote learning. Typically in the fall, we'd have thirty percent of our classes online anyway. We started with two-thirds of them with twice that online this fall. Right now, we're just having labs, no lectures on campus because of the spike in the last, in the last few weeks. And it's also going to be a challenge because I'm going to be, well, probably virtually sad, would have been in New Mexico, a conference, a summit for higher education folks called Shift Happens. And right now, higher education is probably going through one of the three greatest shifts in the history of higher education. From the Morrill Act of 1862, when the land-grant universities were created all across the country by that congressional act. The community college movement in the 50s and 60s, when in some years, a hundred community colleges opened across the country during that about thirty-year period from the late 40s into the early 70s. And now there are 1,200 community colleges with nearly 2,000 campuses. But community colleges are struggling the most right now, along with small privates, community colleges and small privates as well, because of a lot of those kids that decided not to go to school this year because of COVID compounded by the birth dearth or the demographic trough that we're in right now. Please, you young folks have babies, because nobody's having babies. And it's really catching up to the higher education and the nation. There's going to be a big price to pay for that in the future of the nation. So it's critical for people who are of college age today to go to college so that they'll be there to work and help lead the nation in a few years. So the social and economic impact of this period compounding the birth dearth, the nation is going to struggle with for years to come. And to bring it locally, to end on some good news, bring it down to the micro picture. You know, I spoke to Harvey about this because I wanted to be able to speak specifically to some of the things they're, you know, they're doing over there and not just Broom. I touched on the national issues. Is, you know, the medical, the health science campus that they're building over in Johnson City, you know, obviously, we have a great demand for healthcare workers. And that's going to be a great help with the nursing expansion and physical therapy and occupational therapy added in there eventually. And of course, the pharmacy schools. So really good news on that front, that whole area, expanding that area is a great new phase of Binghamton University, our big sister's growth over there across the river. And here at Broom, we were asked to join a national platform for online workforce development. We're the sixth community college in the nation to be asked to join a platform called Unmuddle, U-N-M-U-D-L. You'll be hearing more about that in the future, to put up online workforce training programs, maybe eventually credit someday, or certainly courses that will lead to credit. You know, they hope to have eventually two community colleges from each state. Right now, I think there are eight of us total. But the advantage for us is it gives us a national market from a region that is shrinking. So it's a great thing for Broom, but it's also a great thing for the area because the community colleges that will offer on that platform, you know, programs, what they try to do is have us operate in our niche areas. Well, obviously, we cannot cover every niche area. So other community colleges around the nation will be offering workforce training programs in their expertise that we wouldn't be able to offer that will be available to people here. So we're very excited about that. The launch should be somewhere right just before Thanksgiving or just after the major national launch. So we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Drum. Congratulations and kudos to you for your leadership. And that's a perfect timing for that, and we look forward to hearing more. And I will tell you, I was listening this morning, it was some business radio station. There is, they are expecting a millennial baby boom. So you might, we might be in the right direction. A lot of millennials are starting to have, are going to have babies because of COVID, they said. So we have one more question for our formal. I know we're a little bit pressed on time, but any members of media or anybody that has questions following this and any of our group, our cabinet group that can stay around a little longer, we'd love that. So on a good day, our K through 12 schools serve as educators, counselors, mediators, protectors, disciplinarians, mentors, friends, you name it, they're doing it. So my question is on K through 12 education. And I would like to welcome Jason Andrews, Superintendent at Windsor Central School District. And I've been thinking a lot about what I wanted to talk to you about. And so the challenges of all those things, all those hats you all wear is only compounded during COVID. So this question is not really directed about testing and hybrid and remote and everything. It's really, from a vantage point, in some degrees, as a parent myself, I've been incredibly plugged into what's happening. And in some cases, there are students that have not entered their school since March. My kids are virtual. They've not been in their classrooms since March. The kids are, they're students, they're not, they're also not decision makers. They don't really have as much big of a platform to speak on how this has been impacted in the broader community. But they've been strong and they've been resilient, and they're missing the normalcy that they're used to. And in some cases, protection or freedom or a place that they can feel themselves that the schools provide. So I guess my question to you is, what would you say right now to our community about how we provide some sense of normalcy to our kids? How do you encourage students to just stay, you know, stay the course? You know, even though they're kind of forced to go with the flow right now?
Yeah, so thanks, Stacy. A great question. That's certainly a tricky question too. Because as you say, you know, everybody has their opinions about what the schools should be doing and what they ought to be doing. Those things are not necessarily in alignment with what we're required to be doing. So, you know, reopening plans, we had over 200 pages of guidance that we had to follow. And students are sort of caught in the middle between what their parents, their families think should be happening, perhaps the employers of their parents think should be happening, what we're required to do, what kids want to have happen. All of those things that have been mentioned by the previous speakers that are impacting, the adults are impacting the kids and really exponentially. Because as you said, they don't get a vote in that. They don't get a vote into whether or not they have internet access or food security issues, et cetera. And I think, you know, on the one hand, you know, the digital divide, huge issue. Food insecurity, you know, in our district, between March and August, we served 190,000 meals, hosted five community food pickups, you know, all those things. By the way, in a time when we are in a funding crisis. So, you know, the Payroll Protection Act and the CARES Act and all those things that have been discussed did not come to either higher education to a large degree or certainly to school districts. So all of this under the threat of really significant looming budget cuts. So I can tell you, in my district, we have seventeen fewer employees than we did at this time last year. And so kids are the, you know, are impacted by that for sure. So thinking about, you know, I have a senior in high school, my son is a senior, and thinking about what life looked like last year at this time and things that may not be so important in the scheme of things to the adults. But, you know, homecoming and athletics and clubs and extra tutoring support and all of those things, certainly that's a big strain on kids. What I would say to give kids hope and to give families hope is, you know, so in our district, we have a lot of in-person instruction going on. And what I can tell you is, barring the masks and some of the dividers, school looks a lot like school. Kindergarten kids are still cute as can be, five-year-old kids that say incredibly inquisitive and sometimes off-the-wall things. Kids are still kids. Schools still look much the same. And by the way, you know, the news, of course, is driven by the fact if we have to shift to fully remote, et cetera, due to the number of people in quarantine. But this is not due to students spreading this virus in schools. The protocols that were put in place, which by the way, cost a lot of money, took a lot of time, they really are protecting kids. And every day, there are still thousands of kids in Broom County in classrooms receiving really high-quality education. There are counselors and social workers and psychologists working with kids, remote or not. The number of home visits, again, we're still delivering meals. There's so much of that, that basic care that is still happening for kids. And, you know, in terms of that, you know, going back to some degree of normal, I think kids are just as eager as their parents are. Kids are ready for that. But our community has been, I think, really stepped up in big ways to support families and certainly to assist kids in any way that we can. And, you know, at the end of the day, all of these workforce, higher ed needs, schools still have to try to respond to make sure that, you know, all of our students are still ready for a bright future at the end of the day.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Thank you for your comments. And I think it's all, it's certainly good to hear. And thank you for your leadership and all of our schools, K through 12 schools, in navigating this on behalf of our kids and families. So we are, interestingly, right about at 5:30, which is our time of ending. But if, like I said, if our group is interested in sticking around, I don't know if there's questions that anybody wanted to ask specifically towards anyone. I know we had some, I think we had some media attendees. If they wanted to ask questions now, or certainly I would encourage to follow up with any of our speakers, a lot of topics covered tonight. So we'll give a minute. Natalie, I don't know if you had any questions submitted or sent or anything that anybody attending would like to ask at this moment?
I haven't had anyone ask yet.
If there is any questions, you can throw them in the chat. And if not, we will miraculously close right on time. So as we're giving that a moment or two, I did just want to thank our attendees for taking time to be with us today. I hope that, again, if nothing else, you come away a little more aware of the connection among critical community stakeholders. I encourage you to reach out to our offices of the Chamber of the Agency for Resources, Information and Access to Potential Assistance. Please let us know what we can do for you. Please, also, please wear your mask. Please stay patient. Please stay compassionate. Please make us all aware of how we can help you and the challenges you're facing. We are truly stronger together. So with that, I will close the program. Thanks again. We're not ending our cabinet calls, just so all of you know. We're just scheduled for two weeks out, I think so. I want to keep this momentum going with our group. Thank you for your commitment to being on those conversations. And with that, I think we will close it out.
Thanks so much.
Stacy. A question, if anybody could stay on. Thank you. We have a student. Does anyone have, any of the attendees have specific advice for students and young people to contribute to working towards solving the issues of this time? Well, that's a great question. Does anybody want to jump in on that? How can students become part of the conversation on how to solve our community issues?
I think, I think it's like eating an elephant, how you do it like one bite at a time. And I would say if there's a not-for-profit or some, you know, entity that you've worked with through your school or your classes, now I think I would reach out. I think there are a lot of not-for-profits that are, you know, voiced that are here and that would always be looking for assistance. I would check them out as a good. And they would always be looking for assistance. I would, I would check them out as a good place to start because they're part of the solution. You want to volunteer at the hospitals? I'm sure they're always taking volunteers as well. So. But it's like, whatever your talent is, find, find a not-for-profit or a government agency that might be able to take you, you know, take you on. I know what we do, we do unpaid interns here at the Broom Tiger workforce. But I think probably what they're looking for is more, you know, in the hospitals and, you know, the schools, et cetera, the grammar schools, if they need help. I think that's a great place to go.
I'd say two things Stacy, when it's becoming apprentice in the trades. They're great jobs, there's lots of need out there. And then someday you can have your own business in the, in the trade that you, that you started, if you, if you want to take it, if you want to take it further. Or as I mentioned earlier, you know, go to college and get your degree because we need you. And there's going to, there's going to be lots of, lots of need and lots of jobs that won't be able to be filled coming out of this.
Stacy, if I, if I could just jump in and piggyback off what Bob said, because I think that's, you know, a good point. I would tell, you, you need to get involved, right? Decisions are made by people who show up and oftentimes. You know, there are special interest groups and people that show up specifically for their organizations. So come to a public, you know, come to a public meeting, go to a public hearing, you know, call, reach out and, you know, contact us. I mean, you know, this is a small community. If, if we get people that want to do internships at city hall all the time, they, they, sometimes people, they don't know where to go. They're afraid to call. They think, you know, well, there's no way that, you know, the organization might say yes. Find an organization or something that you're passionate about and call, you know, it's. I know that all of us on here, if you wanted to get an internship for Kevin Drum, I'm sure he, you know, he'd be thrilled to try to find you someplace in. The organization or Bob Murphy or Rick Madderese or in Senator Axar's office or here at city hall. That's, you know, that's how you find out if you like, you know, what you're doing. And these things, you know, more times than not often lead to, you know, entry level jobs as well. So decide, you know, what, what organization interests you the most and, and get involved. Because, you know, showing up is, is a big part of, showing up and having a seat at the table is a big part of getting something done. You know, there are those that, that kind of just chirp from the sidelines that don't really care about. You know, the results, but just want to advocate for an issue. And then there are folks that really want to roll up their sleeves and, and get the job done. Decide which one you want to be and make it happen. And this is a community where, you know, everybody embraces students and there's more than enough opportunities here to get involved.
I have another question. We have some students on our, our program today. I love this. So a question from Kayla. How can you work with teachers that may have, may just not understand online learning is hard for some students and are struggling with this hard time? So I don't know, do we still have Jason on the line?
I'm happy to, I'll, I'll take that one. Sure. So, so I think, you know, the, the challenge of online learning is a challenge for everyone. So it is, I think, challenging for students, it's challenging for teachers, it's challenging for families. And it just is, engagement is, is trickier in that way. And I think the assumption that folks have that, oh, well, you just start teaching online. Like that's, you just do it. You know, that's a, that is a totally different type of, of instructional approach. It takes time, it takes skill, it takes learning. And I think our folks have in, in K-12 and in higher ed. You know, there are people who have been gifted at that to begin with. There are folks that this is brand new and this is way out of their wheelhouse. So I think, you know, part of it is being open to communicate with that teacher. And also to utilize the other resources that you have, counselors, administrators, et cetera. I think everyone has the same interest and that is for all of our students to be successful. You know, I think it, it can be uneven in terms of how that looks in different classes, in different districts, et cetera. So I would say, you know, the big step to that is, you know, be honest, be open, ask for help. And, and try to, to make those connections, to try to, to be as successful as you can be. And, and I think right now, just in life in general, everybody having a little bit more grace. And patience with, with everyone else would be very well served for, for everyone in education and frankly, across all sectors.
Thank you, Jason. I don't see, I don't think I'm seeing any other questions. I love that we've got some students on with us. Any final call, I'll guess for, I'll, I'll say for questions. Again, I'd encourage the media that was in attendance, thank you all for, for being here and listening. And we would love to have you follow up. There's a lot of great partners here. So please reach out to them, see what they're working on. And I think that was just a comment. So with that, I don't see other, any other questions. So thank you all again for being part of our town hall. And look forward to talking to you all.